Evening and welcome to this regular session of the Grant County Council. I'll call the meeting to order. The prayer will be led by Mr. Meeks with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Hicks, if you would stand.
Dearest have my father, we bow before you tonight. Lord, we come before the throne of grace, begging an interest in your mercy and grace today. We pray that you would be with these leaders this evening as they try to make informed decisions, grant them the wisdom and the discernment that they need. Lord, we ask that everything that would be done here would be done decently and in order and to your glory. We pray that you would forgive us of our many sins and our many shortcomings. We ask all these things in Christ's name and for his sake we pray. Amen.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. If you would, do the roll call, please.
Scott.
I had a conversation with Mr. Scott today and he wouldn't be able to make it due to some scheduling issues at the school.
Connor.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Perez.
Present.
Poling.
Here.
Lemming.
Here.
Middlesworth.
Here.
We have a call. Next item would be the auditor's report.
Do you have your monthly reports if you have any questions?
Are there any questions or comments regarding the auditor's report? If there are no questions, I'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the regular session of February the 21st, 2024. You should have received the minutes this evening as well as an electronic copy. Are there any corrections that need to be made to the minutes? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion. I have a motion from Mr. Perez, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve the Grant County Council regular session minutes of February the 21st, 2024. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. We'll move on to new business. First item under new business, item A, Grant County Sheriff Del Garcia with additional appropriation regarding the County General Fund. Is he here this evening? I've had no conversation with the sheriff, so I will just move on to the next item for now. Next item under new business, item B, Grant County Highway Department, David White with additional appropriations within the Wheel Tax Fund, Local Road and Street, MVH Restricted, as well as the MVH Fund. Good evening.
The first thing I was going to bring up is, I guess, for the wheel tax. And I did leave a copy of in front of you on some of the roads that we're looking at trying to pave this year. That's just kind of a wish list, but, and that's not a real exact number, but it's pretty close. So that'll help fund some of these projects that I'm trying to do to get ready for the wheel tax money to use in local road and street. So the first one was the additional $700,000 for the wheel tax to be used for paving projects. I don't know if you want me to just do one at a time?
Yeah, go ahead and go through them.
Okay. And then the local road and street, additional $200,000 in paving projects. That's just money that has not been appropriated for 2024. And then the MVH Restricted, additional $450,000 for our, by two minutes, which basically is for our chip sale program. And then the 1176, the regular MVH Fund, like to ask for additional $2,000 for cell phone stipend for our Formans that we have that have their cell phones on 24/7. They actually wanted to stay with their family plan that they had, so we're just going to pay them instead of changing and going on our program. That's why I do have a line item for cellphone, but they're going to keep their own family plan and pay it that way.
Have we done this in the past?
Yes, yes.
How many Formans do you have?
It'd be me, myself, and four other gentlemen.
But the reimbursement?
Right, yes.
It's a $55 a month stipend.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there, are there any other questions or comments regarding this request?
Just to let you know, the $1,675 for the paving projects, that would be all paid for out of the Wheel Tax and Local Road. The Local Road and the Vituminus will use that. We have another eight miles that we have put into community crossing grant, so we have to make a million dollar match on that. We still have not found out if we have been awarded, hopefully the first of April. If we do not have to use that as a match, then we'll use the rest of that money towards paving projects, so.
Yeah.
When it says wedge on the paper, like 19 millimeters, nine and a half, is that thickness or what?
That's the type of mix it is. The 9.5 is a bigger material. So what usually we do is on roads that are in bad shape, we wedge them first and then we put the 19-millimeter on top as a surface. Some roads that we do just two layers on, if it's been a hard surface road for years, we can sometimes get by and just do two surfaces, so.
Are there any other questions or comments from the members?
What's your MVH balance restricted right now?
Well, together, it was over $2 million. So I'm only 2 million, right at 2 million. So I have the, 2,400,000 is when the last time Angie checked it. So I'm going to use about 450,000 out of that, so I might be back this summer to ask for more if, if we can.
Well, I've never had to ask in my situation because I don't have to navigate it, but what, does Chippin Seal qualify for community crossings as well?
It does, but we've never had, they have never selected it. Yeah. Actually, they probably, I would say 90% of the time select bridges over paving.
Bridge, yes.
Yeah.
And Angie, these all have been advertised? Any other questions? There's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to accept as presented by Mr. White.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Poling to approve additional appropriations within the Highway Department, the Wheel Tax, 4957 account, additional appropriation of 700,000 to roadwork and the Local Road and Street Fund, 1169, and additional 200,000 into the paving line item. MVH Restricted, 1173, an additional 450,000 to Vituminus, and MVH 1176, an additional appropriation of 2,000 to the cellphone allowance. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Lemming.
Aye.
Poling.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Aye.
Middlesworth.
Yes.
Just let, I'm sorry, just let you know the cash balance on the Wheel Tax is a million seven, so.
It's a gubernatorial election year, so I heard there's going to be a second call during the primaries, so.
Yeah. Yeah, as you'll say, hopefully.
Save your money for another match.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. Next item under new business, item C, Grant County E911 Central Dispatch Director, Mr. Hicks, with an additional appropriation within E911 Fund?
Good evening. I'm asking for an additional appropriation of $60,000 within the 1222 Fund so that I can continue paying contractual interests that we have, Priority Dispatch, EMD Software, Red Sky, which is the software that the county uses for 911, for our Cisco phones, that gives the dispatchers a specific location within the county network, this building, the D-home, the courthouse, EMS, specific address for our 911s. And then Cushion, PSM Software Maintenance, that's a, that's an annual fee that we've paid out of E911 since the county went to that software. That is a county-wide software used by all public safety disciplines. And then the last one, Thomas Shelby, that's a three-year lease on dispatch chairs. Part of that lease is new chairs every year. So next month I'll be getting six new chairs.
This is something that we'll include next time during the budget process?
Yes, yes.
Did this used to come out of Commissioner's budget when we first started doing this years ago, do you remember?
I don't, as far as I know, the Cushion stuff always came out of E911. I think, I think the Commissioners paid for the software upfront, but I believe the required maintenance has always been paid out of E911, I believe, but that was prior to my involvement, but I believe that's the case.
Just a thought for the future, too.
Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Angie, you have everything you need?
Yes.
Okay, it's been advertised.
Yes.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to accept as presented. Maybe no mixed year of budget time that we add that in, so we'll take care of Mr. Hicks.
I have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Perez to approve within the County E911 Fund, an additional appropriation of $60,000 to the contractual line item to cover various software and other agreements. Any other questions? Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Lemming.
Aye.
Perez.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Poling.
Yes.
Middlesworth.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, you have a great.
Motion carries, thank you. And the Commissioners pulled both items, correct? So item D, you can mark out the Commissioners asked to table those items this evening. So next, under new business, item E, Gas City Mill Township Public Library Board Appointment. We have not advertised this position, correct?
No.
Okay. So I, I think we got to stay with, continue to advertise them, those board appointments so we can get other interest. But the position would be for the Gas City Mill Township Public Library that are requesting Mr. Tim, is it Lucky? Mr. Tim Lucky be reappointed, but again, staying with the way we currently have been doing things, we'll advertise the position and then next meeting, the committee will make a recommendation of appointment. And so Angie, would you advertise that for us at the next meeting?
Yeah, I just asked.
Okay. We don't need to take any action then. So next item under new business, item F, Grant County Auditor Angie Jarvis with the fund-to-fund transfer regarding the County General Fund?
I've been trying to clean up some funds that have negative balances, and these are two of the funds that currently do have negative balances. One of them is the CARES Provider Relief Fund. This was a, it was part of the first COVID mandates that we received, and it was overexpended by $37.30. And I would just request that we do a fund-to-fund transfer from County General to clear that up, so I have a zero balance because State Board of Accounts will note this. We also have a negative balance in Fund 9104. This was a grant fund and, let's see. There was some claims that were paid out of this grant after the grant was closed, which caused the negative balance. So once again, this is a closed grant and this balance needs to be zero. So we just need to clear that up.
Are there any questions from the members? So if there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion? I have a motion from Mr. Perez, a second from Mr. Connor to allow the transfer requests of $1,408.23 to be transferred out of the General Fund to the CARES Provider Relief Fund in the amount of $37.30. And then also $1,370.93 to the DOC 106 Grant Fund. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Perez.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Poling.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Middlesworth.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item under new business, item G, myself and the ECI Regional Planning District. I believe Mr. Morell's on the Zoom call.
Yes, I'm here.
So as you know, the county's been involved with ECI for a number of years, and I've been the board appointment as well as Jonathan's served on the board as well. Currently, the county pays everyone's share but Marion's share. And Marion hasn't been a player at the table for some time. I went back to, I believe the last time the county paid for their dues was in 2010. And so they really haven't been an active part of ECI. And anyways, I introduced Mr. Morell to the Director of ECI along with Chuck Vinkert. We had a really welcome meeting. I think there's a lot that could be done with the partnership from ECI as well as within the city of Marion regarding brownfields and Okra Grants and several other things. So I'm asking this body as well as Mr. Morell, I guess, do you want to chime in?
Yes, I was just letting me, first I apologize for my actions wrong on spring break with my, my family, but I, yeah, I want to put Marion in a position to be a player, and I think that this is something that the city of Marion and the county can collaborate on to put us in a better position for success. So I'm in agreement with Councilman Middlesworth that this will be a great thing for us, and I would love that the city of Marion and the county can partner, you know, just to make Marion a, which we haven't been for a substantial amount of time.
So I guess I'm asking the council, it, their payment is for, you know, based on per capita, so it'd be the 2024 capita support, and the total's $8,453.10. I'm asking the council if we could advertise it for the next meeting to be able to pay the dues to ECI. I wouldn't be asking if I didn't think there'd be a lot of benefit to the city. I mean, having served on the board, I feel like there's value in it. They want to be a part of what goes on in ECI. I find, I find value in it, I think they do, too.
I understand that I'm wearing both hats in this, but as I'm, you pay for all the other communities that are currently part of it, I'm a board appointment to the board currently. So, you know, I would be supportive of, in theory, if we're going to do it for one, we should do it for all, and cognizantly aware of the fact that historically Marion's been the only one that hasn't participated. So I appreciate Mayor Morell taking the initiative to join the fray, if you will, because now that we're all on board, I think from a regional standpoint, it'll absolutely help us when we apply for some of these grants, that we're all players and members now.
Can you, like, either one of you speak to, like, what it's done or what it's going to do in the future?
We, we have not had any successful ones yet. We've only used them for one that we've needed for. All of ours have been more infrastructure-based on the backend. We have absolutely used them as a resource and information, a wealth of information to help us navigate. I'm only as good as the information that I have, and they've been an overwhelming resource for us, but they've had success in Gas City and all of the other counties. So I think it would be, it behooves all of us.
Yeah, I know Swayze's had success. That's off the top of my head, I'm trying.
Four thousand, I think, last year or something, so. And they have more to pay for themselves.
So I get, again, I'm asking this body if, for a motion to allow it to be advertised as an additional appropriation for the next meeting, and where could we pay it from? Or where would you like to see it paid from?
I think your budget.
Where we pay the?
Where we pay the other dues from.
Okay.
That's correct.
Seated.
I think it is.
Yeah.
So, so this is just to advertise it, and then the next round would be to appropriate the $8,453,000.
So moved. I have a motion from Mr. Poling, a second from Mr. Lemming to go ahead and advertise for the additional regarding the Marion's portion to the ECI Regional Planning District for the next meeting. Are there any other comments or questions from the members?
I would just comment in the interest of fully disclosing that my partner, Michael Hogg, is a city attorney. I don't think that fully required me to explain anything, just, like you said, to fully disclose.
Are there any other comments from the members? Public input? Just go ahead and come to the podium and state your name and address.
I just want to say something. I have no idea what you're talking about because we can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll try to speak louder. Are there any, any other public comments? Yes.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's David Kane, Marion City Council, 4622 South Carey Street. I ask you to support this motion. Thank you.
Our microphones used to mic, you know, have speakers, now it's all on the computer. You know that? Because even when I was in the area of planning, it was that way. So, you know, dress them.
Marcus, you listening?
He cares now.
Is there any other public input? Roll call, please.
Poling.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Aye.
Yes. Motion carries. So we'll put that on the agenda for next week. Thank you, Mr. Morell.
All right, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Have a good spring break.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
I believe that concludes the new business. We'll move on to committee reports. Oh, is he here?
I'd make the motion to table the sheriffs.
Second. I have a motion to table the additional appropriation regarding the sheriff's request, a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Poling. Are there any questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Aye.
Poling.
Yes.
Lemming.
Aye.
Middlesworth.
Yes.
Motion carries. Will you notify him that we tabled?
Yes.
Please, thank you. Okay, again, moving on to committee reports.
Well, I have one if no one else has one, from the Growth Council Committee. And I know we've discussed this a lot over the past year, so I don't want to delve too much into the weeds, but just, over the course of the last 60 hours of the state legislative session at the, at the Indiana House before they concluded their session a week ago last Friday, there was language inserted into House Bill 1121 that reallocated specifically the special purpose funds of Grant County. Previously, in the prior year, this body had this exact conversation. And currently, the special purpose fund, as we have it deemed, is 0.01% dedicated to the Growth Council. We had a conversation about repurposing those funds due to some advertising issues. It did not take effect. However, that exact language made it into state legislation specifically concerning Grant County that, from every conversation that I've had, was absolutely inserted by lobbyists hired on behalf of the Grant County Commissioners. Now, all that to say that when that happened, serving on the Executive Committee of the Growth Council, as well as historically in a past life, dealing with a lot of legislative issues at the State House on behalf of Congress when I worked for them, I received a lot of phone calls when all this started happening. But phone calls, to be truthfully with you, because the language was identical to ours that, and all that to say, when we were having this conversation earlier, previously in the last year, and because I was one of the few that wasn't in favor of it, just because I, I was not in favor of it without having a plan for the Growth Council. I did, I thought the two should be aligned, but that I myself was getting criticism because they wanted to know why I flipped on the Growth Council as an executive member of the board, since it was the exact language that was used. And ironically enough, the said lobbyists were hired by the contractors that happened to be in those meetings when we were discussing those things. So I'm assuming, that's, that's the only part of any of this that I will say tonight, that I'm assuming that that's where they got the language. So as it stands, it did end up passing the Indiana House. There were 13 no votes. The overwhelming majority of the bill really contained a lot of great aspects. So it did overwhelmingly pass, but I'm disappointed by the fact that Grant County once again demonstrated to Indiana as a whole and any other developer around the country paying attention that we can't work together and that we have to use the Indiana State House as a way to go around each other. That was very disappointing and disconcerting. I know that was a lot. I don't want to pontificate more than I have to, but I know it's a little unorthodox. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those because I know there's a lot of big-picture things that are discussed. From a local government standpoint, the, the legislation that was passed real allocates the 0.1% to a 0.5% specifically and solely only to be used on. used on jail modifications and constructions. That's a forty-nine thousand percent increase. And my, my clerk and myself in the town of Upland have done our math on our, our lit funds, because we receive our lit funds directly. Currently, that's, our taxpayers pay thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in lit funds approximately that we return back at a point zero one percent. At point five percent, that number turns into a one point eight million dollar number at a forty-nine thousand percent increase. I don't think this is anything anyone can afford, so I'm not in favor of what was done. I'm not in favor of how it was done. I understand at some point we're gonna have to have a hard conversation about what needs to be done to the jail, but an end around created by lobbyists with special interests that wanted to put a mechanism already in place without our knowledge and/or approval and/or consent to put in a mechanism that would automatically fund the top of the options as far as what they could do is very disconcerting and disheartening. All to mention now that, now that regardless of what we do, the Growth Council once again is defunded. So regardless of what happens with me over the course of the next year in the primary before my term is up at the end of the year, I would like for us to work together to identify a way to identify funding to continue support for the Growth Council.
Yeah, we can go ahead and open for public comment. Just state your name and your address and allow...
Michael Duke, Bradford Pike, East Grant County. Thank you, Mr. Perez, for that explanation. This afternoon, I did a little bit of research on the House Bill that you mentioned, 1121. And I found, because I had heard the last couple of days that there was a circumstance, much as you described. The Section 12 of that House Bill provides new language to the Indiana Code. It will read, and I'm, I'm reading off of a copy that I only have one sheet of that I printed off from the House Bill from the Legislative Services, what page did I... Section 28A, this section applies to Grant County and only if the county council repeals provisions of its local income tax ordinance, providing that under IC 6-3.6-10-2, per n, seven, and per n, one one hundredth of one percent of the county's special purpose rate revenue is used to fund the Grant County Economic and Growth, Growth Council. That, that sounds, kind of reads odd to me, but basically that talks to the one percent you were alluding to. Section B of this, or Point B of Section 28 then reads, "The county council may, by ordinance, determine that the additional local income tax revenue is needed in the county to do the following. One, finance, construct, acquire, improve, renovate, or equip the county jail, including costs related to the demolition of existing buildings, acquisition of land, and any other reasonable related costs. Two, repay bonds issued or leases entered into for the purpose described in subsection Paragraph C, "If the county council makes the determination set forth in subsection B," previously just said, "the county council may impose a tax on the adjusted gross income of local taxpayers at a rate of, at a rate, tax rate that does not exceed the lesser of the following, five tenths percent, a rate necessary to carry out the purposes described in this section. The tax rate may not be greater than the rate necessary to pay for the purposes described in subsection B." There's more verbiage to it, and I'm not gonna read the rest of it. But I've not attended county council meetings for the past year or more. I started reattending the council meetings here last June. I honestly do not recall any discussion from June on. If there was, and I was asleep sitting out here, maybe I missed it, but I don't recall any discussion about any approach to the state legislature for provision to the Indiana Code to allow the county council more, additional latitude in affecting the tax rate of the local income tax ordinance. Now, I'm, I heard what Mr. Perez said, but my additional question is, who's the lobbyist? Can we put the name out on the table, please? And can we have more description for the community members? Or maybe it's just myself, if maybe they're all up to speed, but I'm not. I'd like to know what the council's input to, if any, the, this lobbyist, or I heard you say commissioners, what discussions that the commissioners have had. And I will leave that as the standing question. If any one of the council members could please address that. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say that myself as the president had no communication whatsoever regarding the House Bill 1121, and I believe that would be the same for the members.
This is a total surprise to me. I'm finding out about it like any member of the public. And I, I know, Jim, you want to get up and speak, and I'll give you the chance, and I'm sure Mr. President will, but I just want to thank you, Jonathan, for your comments. I agree with you, and we can't afford this kind of taxation on the people. And over my dead body and vote, well, I ever vote for that kind of money being spent on a new jail. It's not gonna happen with my consent or my vote, because we know who's gonna get rich from that. If it was free, sure, I'd like to build a nice big jail and never have a federal judge force us because of our overcrowded problem. But with our economic situation in Grant County, we cannot afford a hundred million dollar jail, period. So I hope people are watching this very closely.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments as well, Mr. Perez and Mr. Connor. But as far as the attorney, the lobbyist that was hired, the name is Craig DeVault, and the commissioners paid fifteen thousand for that to be done. But as far as this body had no knowledge whatsoever to the hiring of a lobbyist.
Which I understand they have contractual funds in their budgets they could spend, but a heads-up would have been nice, but clearly that was not the intent. I, I know we want to have, Jim had a comment, and, but I, I have two things that I do want to follow up on from a council perspective. While it's all well and good, even if this fund is created in the way that it is and the mechanism that it is, this would create funds, and I want to ask this before you come up, Jim, because I hope you're going where I am. This would create funds in a certain column for one particular use. There's a lot of the area in Grant County that is already currently at the tax caps. So while this may create funds in one area that have one specific use, I would like Darren or whoever else our financial consultant is, look into, there's gonna be a net loss on the back end when, on the circuit breakers and on the seeded funds with all these funds are created, because for a lot of people, we're already at the caps and/or will far exceed the caps with any rate anywhere close to some of these numbers that we're talking about. So, which, those funds are the funds that have broader uses, which are gonna tie our hands overall. So I think we need a full picture of what the rates actually mean. And my second question, and Nathan, this is something I would like you to look into, and if we need a consensus of the body, I'll ask for it. But because of the irregular, unorthodoxed manner of what happened, what is the legalese for us as a body if we pass something different? Because now we're conflicting state legislation, which in theory supersede us, but...
Not to step on Nathan's toes, but I don't think it's legally possible to pass something inconsistent with commissioners, because we do two different things.
Right.
Again, open and close the first strings. That's what we do. So we can't, we don't legislate, and we can't, you know, override legislation, so to speak, of the commissioners. But what I'm hearing is that we may have some options, whether or not we make some moves financially to dovetail with that House Bill. And if we don't do it, it doesn't work.
Well, because even when I came on in May, that, that was the conversation, was either reallocating it or reducing the fund, because it still, even before it was point one, it was point two. So if we move the number as it currently is, there just needs to be some, on clarity on, the state passed a number. I'm with Mike on that number is not feasible for anything that we can afford. At some point, we're gonna have to come up with a different number if we actually can ever come up with an actual plan on what the heck to do, if we can work, finally work together, or have people work with us, so that way we can pass a number. So our number will be different than the number the state passed. So then there's two conflicting...
Which I think it says, I think it says up to a half.
Up to a half.
Up to, yeah. Yeah, so...
Yeah, but it's currently point one.
Right.
It's a forty-nine thousand percent increase.
Right. Point zero one.
But we're just...
Point zero one.
We're just the first part of that, right?
Right.
It's still a tax council for the county.
No.
Well, it puts...
According to the legislation, it gives the county council the sole authority.
It puts the tax council in charge, which essentially is us.
It either gives us, or it puts us in the bullets place, because if you don't do it, what's happening now? You're the bad guy, right? So Fort Wayne's going through something very similar, it's been in the news, I don't know if you've been watching it for the last three or four months, where the commissioners are doing one thing, and the county council's back, backpedaling, trying to make sure that they get some sort of money as an account allocated, and that's very much what it sounds like to me.
And from my perspective, when I was fighting this, I was, I was opposed to it from a county council perspective because of what had been taken from us, and from a local government perspective, because it essentially took our lit funds away without any discernment or public input or control for the sake of at least having a conversation. So I was, and...
And that all goes back to what you said last May?
Yes.
When all those things started, and we started doing that.
And I'm sure he has no problem with me saying publicly Mayor Rock was adamantly opposed to it too, and just making just as many calls as I was. So we were both fighting for over seventy-two hours.
It is disappointing.
Yes.
It's beyond disappointing, but two, to, to piggyback on that, I know the commissioners have approved a, a bond agreement at their last commissioners' meeting, build, operate, transfer agreement, and they also approved to have RQAW do the design work.
How can they do that when they haven't brought it to us?
And so I was questioning, Angie and I had some conversations, how do you approve the design work when you have no contract or no dollar amount, which...
I think they can do that. They just can't fund it without us.
Okay.
In fact, that is the way it's done, is you come up with a study and...
You got paid for the study, though, right?
And then you get a price on it.
They have it.
You go to the council and say, this is how much it's gonna cost, can we have the money? That is how it works.
But somebody has to pay for the study, right?
If you select a designer, you'd think you'd know the dollar amount.
They won't for that, but yes.
So anyways, I know that's in the pipeline, and so...
So they're basically taking taxpayer, fifteen thousand dollars taxpayers' money and backdooring us on the other side with this law to raise the tax. And they're here for the people? That's, that's crazy.
Yeah, go ahead, come to the podium and...
Jim McWhort from Sweetser. Just a couple of things, and obviously, John, you know, good thing to look through that, I guess. It is frustrating, and I'd say there are a lot of adjectives used to describe how that happened without you guys being involved. No way that should have gone through kind of a legislative process without the council being involved with that discussion, I'd say. But a couple of things, remember, you don't have to do it. It's up to, and you don't have to make those changes, so keep that in mind. If you, if you decide you need to, sure, that's your call, but you don't have to do that. Even though it's in there, you don't have to do it, I think. And you mentioned the tax caps. Really, this income tax piece has nothing to do with the tax cap pieces, so there's nothing to do with the property tax cap losses involved with this. Income tax is totally separate from the property tax structure. Okay? So don't worry about it from that perspective.
Okay.
Any other questions you might want to ask? Yeah, it's just a couple of comments on that. It was really when I, Shane called me about it a while back, and I thought, can't believe they would do that without involving a council, but obviously they did, so...
I'd say, what do you know about, I know the answer to that question. You do now?
I do now. I do now. I heard, Shane and I had some conversation about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, come to the podium, state your name, where you live, for a second.
Harold Kings, 707 South Sem Street, Swayze. If I understand this right, fifteen thousand dollars gets you a lobbyist, and they get you tax information worded specifically for Grant County, I'd like to know who has that kind of power. You know, there must be a pretty dang good lobbyist.
Yeah, I said the name of the lobbyist was Craig DeVault.
Okay. My next question is, who's his contact to get...
I have to go off from him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But he has to get lobbyists to one of the legislators to get that added in very specifically.
Bill sponsors are on it.
Thank you for the information.
The bill.
Yeah. The other, the sponsors are on the bill.
Yeah, you can, you can see the bill sponsors, and that's who they went through, the lobbyists used those legislators, I'd say.
The other part, too, that was a little disgusting, was that none of our local representatives were on the bill.
Senator Holman is one we would know locally.
He's still on... But he no longer has Grant County, but we would know him historically.
Right, he's one of his add some history here and so forth.
I, I will, and you can look it up, and we don't, I mean, I, I hate that I'm doing this right now, because I don't, I don't mind the hard conversation. I wanted the commissioners to be in the room when I did this. I'm disappointed when I got here, realized they pulled.
I would like to hear from the commissioners, because for the exact reasons, it's been intimated, and with all due respect, we have two people that are running for their jobs, and we're hearing from them. In all fairness, I'd like to hear from the commissioners as to what was going on here, because this bothers me as well.
Yeah, I get, just another comment, I guess. With that, I'm not surprised that the commissioners, because of their intent, they want to do something with the jail structure, that they've done something to, I'll say, give you additional funding options. I mean, that's not really surprising. What surprises me is they didn't include you guys in the conversation.
Yeah.
You know, why would they do legislative changes where this body has to approve it anyway? So why not involve you in the conversation? So that's, to me, is the biggest dark side of this, I guess.
What, what I can tell you is, if you look up the thirteen nays on the bill, because of this singular issue, our representative, Lori Reeves, did vote against it because of how this was handled.
Some did vote against it?
Lori, Lori voted against it because of how this was handled.
Yeah.
Because the lobbyist conveniently told her that he forgot to tell her.
Are there any other questions, comments? Any other committee reports?
I have a request. Mr. Beck, you're on area plan.
Yes.
Correct. Can we get a report from you as to, I read the paper today and see what happened with the executive director for APC. Can you report to this board what...
Have Randy back there report to that.
Why was that action taken against Mr. Morrell?
Oh, I don't, honestly, Mr. Connor, I don't know that I can speak of personnel matters publicly. I'd be happy...
By Indiana, I, I do mean you're up. You go ahead.
I mean, I, I don't know that I feel comfortable in doing that. I, I would, I guess I'd have to check with our lawyer to make sure in regard to what I can speak to, and I, and I don't know that I want to speak for the whole commission at this time. I would encourage you to come to a commissioner, a commission meeting if you feel that this is information that could be shared.
Well, it's my understanding under Indiana law, having researched this many times for government agencies in my thirty-five-year career, that final action, disciplinary action taken against an employee and the reasons therefore are public information.
Mm-hmm.
And so you might want to check with your lawyer. I would like to answer that question.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to know why that was done. I would like to know why that was done.
I would ask you to come to the Area Plan Commission meeting and hear from all of the commission representatives rather than myself. I don't feel comfortable speaking with, speaking about that with you this evening.
Okay. Well, I, I feel comfortable making the following comments. I would really like to know what possible justification there was for suspending Mr. Malat for five days, especially if there wasn't proper notice given under Indiana's open door hall for the meetings and so forth, as was reported in the paper. But I can tell you, I think Ryan Malat is one of the best county employees we have. He has served the county well. I understand his staff is almost 100%, if not full 100% behind him. He's one of the best things that has ever happened to Grant County and to my district, and has done a fantastic job being responsive and helping get any buildings knocked down. And I'm just extremely bothered by the fact that apparently the first step in progressive discipline was a five-day suspension. Now, when I worked for the State of Indiana and represented the State Personnel Department, that is a pretty draconian first step in progressive discipline.
I would love to have a personal conversation with you in regard to my knowledge of what may have led up to that. In regard to the meeting, I will take responsibility for not properly putting the time on the second open meeting. I did consult with our lawyer, Mr. Glickfield, and he gave me advice on how to create the agenda, and I failed to put the time, and I've learned from that. My logical thinking was, I wasn't sure when the executive session would have ended, so I, that's why I stated after the executive session. And that was, that was not correct on my part. My reasoning was, I really didn't know when it was going to end, so that's...
I think that's a very technical and tight violation.
Yeah. And in regard to why it wasn't posted, I do have an email, after talking with Mr. Glickfield, that I made note to the Area Planning Commission office, that was my understanding, that the media does request one time a year at the beginning of the year for all meetings to be advertised with them. I made note of that to the APC office, and they dismissed it.
And while I appreciate your offer to have a personal conversation with me about this, I think one of the problems with government, local government, is there's really damn any private conversation. I would like a public conversation about this, because I think if the light is shined on this, things like this, it won't happen. And I don't think this was fair to Mr. Malat. I think it was politically motivated, and I, I want to have a public discussion. I want, like I said, I think the law permits and requires the disclosure of the reasons for final disciplinary action being taken against public boards. Check with your lawyer to be sure. If that's public, then I want our conversations to be public.
Did you watch the video by any chance?
No. And I have heard more times than I can count, public boards saying, welcome to the meetings. Now, you know what? If every citizen in Grant County came to every meeting, we'd, we'd have no laws.
It'd be outstanding.
I'm not done, I'll be there for just a minute. And I was at another meeting at the time, if it had gotten my attention, Mr. Malat would have been discussed. I had a conflict. I'll tell you what, if I can make it at another meeting, if there's another one to discuss discipline against Mr. Malat or his favor continuation as an employee of Grant County, you can bet your boots, I will be there to speak and vocalize my support for him.
I'd encourage you to watch the video that is, I believe, on record at this time. I think there, what, what we did differently is we actually allowed, and I appreciate the way you guys do this, you allow public comment to occur before an action is taken. That's something that I would like to adopt as a president of the APC, and it was encouraged by a commission member that we do that in this particular meeting. So we did do that. So there was some expression of some concerns by, you know, residents in regard to Mr. Malat's performance.
Well, if that's a public meeting and a public video that you're encouraging me to watch, can you simply give me the high points as to what was covered?
I'm not prepared to do that.
Mr. Connor, I do know about some stuff, and you need to go research it before you're making accusations.
What accusations have I made?
Well, you just said, convenient. The man just told you to go watch the video. You're, you're, you're jumping on it because one of our employees got suspended. Okay? And you need to go check it out yourself before you insinuate what you just said.
Did not ask for the reasons? That's not insinuating, that's asking for the reasons.
And he's told you, he's told you four times, you didn't feel comfortable to go watch it, it was a public meeting, and that's not good enough for you.
No, it's not. He's here, and this is a public meeting.
It should be.
And he's got, well, that's your opinion. He's got the legal ability and responsibility to answer why action was taken by Indiana law, and he's refusing the answer because he doesn't feel comfortable. Now, are you representing him, or can you...
He just spoke for himself, but said he didn't feel comfortable, he'd speak to his lawyer, then talk to you. I mean, he pretty much answered all your questions.
Okay. I flagged your step up and defending you.
Mr. Connor, what, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
I personally don't appreciate that comment.
Well, then, why don't you speak for yourself, and so Mr. Pauli doesn't have to...
Okay, I will speak for myself. When I was elected president of the APC, there were two commitments that I made. One of those was that we were going to create a more transparent atmosphere for the APC. The second one was that we were going to have a unified APC commission membership, where it wasn't going to be one person or two people making decisions, it was going to be a collaborative effort in decision-making. That's why I am personally encouraging you to come and collaboratively hear from the commission body.
I appreciate the invite, and I will take you up on it.
Any other questions?
Any from you?
I think I've said my piece. Thank you.
I think I've said mine. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Committee reports? Our next regular meeting is Wednesday, April the 17th, at 6 o'clock, same place. Angie, do you have anything? Anything? Okay. Members have anything else?
Is there many? Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.